Minutes of previous meetings of September sixteenth and October seventh, and a special meeting of October eleventh. Board, you have any comments on the minutes of these?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as granted.
Second. A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bills. Are there any additions to the bills?
No.
Okay, any comment on the bills from the board?
I got one comment.
Go ahead.
I think, I'm sure Brian can answer this. Right on the first page, it looks like an electrical expenses for light fixtures, three thousand and two hundred and twenty-four dollars.
LED light fixtures, about the fourth one up in the bottom of the first page.
Those are bulbs for the downtown.
Okay. Because I wasn't sure it said one LED light fixture, and I was gonna ask you if that's how much those light fixtures cost.
Oh, no, that means the first line. Like, do you look at, like, someone has two, I think, right?
Okay, yes.
Now, these are for the LED streetlights that are aluminum ones. It was our turn to buy them. Usually IEP will buy them, then we'll buy them. Now, is for the...
So each fixture is that much?
Each fixture is two hundred and forty-eight dollars. And there's thirteen of them. That's why the bill came up, so three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that's what a fixture costs.
Is that the whole, that, Brian, when you talk about fixtures?
That's the head and the eye. It comes as a complete unit.
Right. I'm assuming it has the LED bulbs in it already?
Yes, it's a fixture that can't be replaced.
Okay.
The LEDs, it's not like a bulb that you can take out and put in. They're a fixed unit.
Perfect, thank you.
I make a motion to build debate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Correspondents?
We have one this evening. Dear Board members and Administrator clerk, please accept this letter of resignation from my position as Deputy Clerk and Deputy Registrar of the Village of Rouse's Point to become effective as of the close of business on October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you for the opportunity, sincerely Patricia Garen. That's for informational purposes. And that's it.
All right. First item that I have is the moratorium on electric boilers. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago, the previous meeting. I'd like to have this moratorium enacted. We had it for eighteen months, and during that eighteen-month period, we should look into see if we want to make it a permanent law banning new electric boilers. This does not affect people that have existing electric boilers and need to replace them. But I think it, it's a, the problem was, we had this on the books before in two thousand and eight, it wasn't followed through, and it expired.
Two years or six?
No, two thousand and six was a board resolution. Two thousand and eight was the moratorium, and it expired, so anyways, this old moratorium, anytime during the eighteen months, we can make it extended to permanent, and you put it in law, which I think would should happen.
Do you make a motion on that?
Um, yes, I'll just, let me just read the first part. There is hereby enacted an eighteen-month moratorium by the Village of Rouse's Point on the acceptance and approval of building permit application for use, installation, and placement of electric boilers and hot air furnaces within Village of Rouse's Point. And, um...
I make a motion to make this a law?
No, moratorium.
Residential.
Okay, we motion to enact a moratorium on electric boilers for eighteen months. Second. Second, by Trustee Gadway. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we should review this within a few months and decide if we want to make it permanent or not. Okay, next thing I have is discussion on the PLM study. Basically what this is, we hired a company to, uh, electric power engineering to do an estimate on projected power costs. Now, as you know, the Pfizer plan isn't really using any power right now. Eventually, what the hope of the village is, is that it's regenerated in there with new businesses and concerns to, um, build new buildings, create new jobs, and get back on its feet, the whole facility. And of course, when they do that, it's gonna use power. So, we did some projections, we asked them to do projections on two hypothetical uses. One is four megawatts load monthly at peak, and the other one was twelve megawatts. And what the, what it came down to in the analysis is, the four-megawatt load, um, let's see, will have a nominal impact on village and will use, yield an annual additional income around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Residential bills will be larger in January, but lower in the summer. In fact, the average, the annual average cost for residents will likely decrease because of the extra revenue. Then the twelve-megawatt load would equate to around seven dollars and fifty cents, it would exceed the allocated hydro. Customers would see an annual average of around point four cents per kilowatt hour increase in the rates, which equates to about seven dollars and fifty cents per month. That's an average. Could be well above the seven fifty in the winter, in the summer could be lower than that. The twelve-megawatt load increase will give the village an estimated five hundred thousand dollars in additional income. Now, the question that I had was, the question that I had was, can we use that additional revenue to put it back into the rates in the village to lower? In other words, if we don't need that profit, why, why make it? I'm not saying we don't need some, you know, obviously we're gonna need some to do it. And also, this doesn't take into consideration if we can get additional hydro power through that, uh, power for jobs. So, what I wanted to do, or what I, what I think we should do, is I asked, um, our consultant, Steve Peters, to look into this. He's the one that analyzed his first part back in August. And I said, is there a way that you can talk with the, um, with the Public Service Commission and find out if there's a way that we can plow that additional revenue back in to offset the increases on individual power users? And he said it would take about five to ten hours, if you wanna, if you wanna have him find that answer out, research it. So, that's what I'm asking the board.
Did we ever look into, like, trying to break that and just have them build separately, just that, that problem, that area? I know, yeah, I know Steve had talked about that at one time, that, he said that, another state, another village or another town down near Utica.
Okay. We also asked PLM to evaluate the impact of a Public Service Commission carve-out of high electric, electricity users whereby the village is held harmless from exceeding the hydro allocation. Now, this pertained to, which the state did, I believe, on these cryptocurrency things, which you've already outlawed. But if they use it, they gotta pay for the, the nuclear power. This scenario is, uh, they're doing this carve-out thing in Frankfurt. They carved on an industrial park where large, where tractor supply distribution center has been set up. And the math works out similar to what we did on our, our projected thing here. The residents won't see any increase in their electric bills. Twelve-megawatt example in Rouse's Point would still get five hundred thousand income, but because the Public Service Commission is involved, they would have a say on how that five hundred thousand is spent. See, the big problem with revenue in the electric department is it can only be spent in the electric department. You can't use it to subsidize the whole rest of the village general fund operations.
Right, but it also wouldn't raise anybody's rates in the village.
No, it might. They said it would, like, seven fifty a month, because they have to buy...
Not if the public commission isn't involved. Not if they do the same thing as the, as the tractor spot.
No, if we don't do anything, it would go up roughly seven fifty a month on an average. If we carved it out, they'd have to pay this money. It wouldn't affect the electric rates, but they'd have, the revenue would still go in the electric department.
Right.
So...
Wouldn't affect the village president.
Okay. The consultant's advice, not Steve Peters, but the PLM consultant, advice is to do, not do the carve-out for this reason, because they would have, the Public Service Commission would have total control over how the revenue is spent from, from that carve-out, you know, the five hundred thousand hypothetically. And they also agreed that any utility usage and development at this scale in the village will likely be done incrementally. In other words, they're gonna put up a building, it'll use a little bit of power, and they'll put up another building, use more power. It's not gonna be like one big giant factory comes in here and just goes from nothing to a whole lot.
So, if we, if we, is that carve-out an option later on?
I believe it is. It's always an option.
If we see that it is starting to affect the village?
Because theoretically, theoretically, or not even theoretically, but you're gonna have to change some of the zoning law descriptions up there eventually, because, you know, that's industrial, and if you start putting things that aren't industrial, you might want a different category in there. You know, that'll be something that the zoning...
Public service tells the rate anyhow.
On electric, yeah.
On electric. You can't, you can't just rid the electric or cut the electric.
Well, you have to go through them to do any of this stuff.
Right.
But I thought it would be an interesting thing to see if that could be plowed back into the general bills, some of it, not all of it, but whatever surplus money, because you can see this thing is going on. If you got five hundred thousand dollar increase in revenues, over and above what we already make on it, you could be talking, you know, a million and a half dollars in three years, just surplus money. Now, there's different things it could be spent on. I mean, one thing that was, that was mentioned was putting another substation up, up on the north end of town. That's a couple million dollars. But that opens up the whole northern part of the village to an industrial park, if you wanted to.
Probably doesn't mean that yet.
No, I mean, I'm not talking none of this today or tomorrow, or even this year or next year.
Oh, yeah.
In the future, this is where it's headed. So I think it's important to get some of this study and analysis done now, before any of this stuff comes in here. It's gonna be coming in, it's just, we need to be prepared for how we handle it when it comes.
Yeah. Oh, I agree, I mean, yeah, if they're not gonna use it right off, but as long as the carving it out is an option later on, I mean, if they do get, say they get fifteen megawatts, then you're gonna be affecting the village people even more.
Right.
So, I would rather have it that the commission controls that money and we don't bother the people. I mean, we're still gonna get upgrades to our electrical and everything else, I mean, that's basically what they're gonna tell us that we have to use it for. But your people wouldn't, wouldn't see any difference in their bills.
Well, and you think it's worth the investment to have Steve look into this a little further for us?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I didn't know what you got from the law, less than a thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, he's seventy-five bucks a dollar.
Seven hundred.
So, okay, a motion to authorize elevate five-one-eight to not to exceed ten hours in investigating this report back to the board?
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get all that down?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, next thing we got is, um, as you know, we're still, uh, blind, um, staffing-wise in the, in the, uh, in the rec center here. And I think we'd like to authorize the clerk to advertise for a full-time seasonal rec maintenance worker. This would be, uh, part-time, or not to exceed six months. It's not a permanent thing, and I don't believe there's any benefits attached to this kind of thing, like we hired Bobby last summer, last year.
Same thing we do every year.
Yeah.
Why do we purposely need that? Because even when they're out, we still have three full-time people. Three, if you have four full-time, including the seasonal, they'd be tripping over each other.
Well, we only have two right now.
Right.
Okay? And this is just to advertise, we can make the decision to hire or not hire later. This is not to hire somebody, this is just to advertise.
Okay.
And then, I'm hoping that the staffing picture clarifies a little bit in the next week or two.
Okay.
Okay? So, I need a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise?
Make a motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I have an email from Glenn Cutter about, uh, Quentin County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. And they wanna know if we'd like to send somebody to this, to, well, it's actually, it's individual meetings with each community, if we can think of anything that needs to be mitigated, like flood problems we have here, or most of it is. And I'm not aware of any. I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, I don't know if this would be something that maybe the fire chief would wanna go to, or maybe the code enforcement, I don't know, I'm just, or anybody on the board?
I gotta talk for that.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm not asking anybody specifically, but I'm just saying, can anybody think of anything that we need to bring to the county's attention? Mr. Powell, do you have any input on this? You, you were involved in it, like, when they had the flood, right?
Yeah.
But they, they did all that, right? They fixed all the shoreline and the...
I think it stuck.
So, can you think of anything that we need to participate in this? No? No, I can't either. I think we'll send them a, a note, Donna, that just says that, uh, we don't have any problems at this time, but we'd like to be kept in a loop on this for future meetings. And we're not slamming that door, but if you think of something. Okay, and then, you got an executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I need to request an executive session to discuss contract negotiation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all, all I have at this time. Trustee Arnold?
I'd like to request an executive session for employment history of a particular employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, I got a call today from Clifford Sterling, and he said that he's still getting calls as code enforcement officer. He's still on the website, apparently, or something like that?
Changed that many times.
Well, he had two people call him today, and he referred him to Mr. Cooper. And so, he said that, uh, the woman told him that she, when she called, he, he was still on the website. So, I don't know. Just to let you know. And also, does anybody know of anybody that, we have a fox that's up on the school property that's getting closer to the school all the time? Do we have a, uh, an animal control?
Is it John, is it John Monk?
No.
Joe Monk?
He retired from that, yeah. We have a small amount of money in the budget for that.
I have the phone number.
Yeah.
It's on our website for, um, where I want to...
Get the guy from Peru, I think, isn't it? Or do we use the one in more?
No, I can get it for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I think Mike and Brian used to do that too, on late...
No, it's, yeah. Oh, anyhow, that's good. So anyhow, they said that they, there was a fox up at the school, and it seemed to be getting closer to the school.
Probably. I seen a couple of them around.
I guess that's all I have tonight. Mr. Mayor? Okay, thank you. I have one other item I just remembered here, because it was somebody else's. Update on shuffleboard project. I got a, an email from Lisa Turner. She has two options on this. We already decided where we wanna put it up, in Rouse Park by the, the cave edge along there. Says, option one, DeSos is booking out into next year, project would not be able to be completed until spring of two thousand and twenty if we'd like to use them. They are also requesting the sod removal and crushed stone be completed prior to them coming to frame for set and finish. Option two, I put feelers out for another contractor. Relations might be interested, could potentially do the project this fall, not guaranteed. Need to confirm and get official quote if you want to go in this direction. Once the decision is made, the grant will cut the Village of Rouse's Point a check for the amount of the project to pay the contractor. The equipment, the grant will purchase the, all the equipment directly and will deliver items to the village. Lakeside Coffee Owners agreed to house equipment to be signed out for use. Sandy's Deli owners agreed to house equipment to be signed out for use in a third location in the village office or library someplace. She's had it up there. Painting and waxing of the cork, paints, stencils, and wax will be purchased directly by the grant. A group of volunteers will paint, stencil, and wax the cork. So, that's what I have for an update on, on where that project is. So, it looks to me like the village isn't gonna have to get involved in this too much. You know, as far as our guys doing anything, I'm sure they'll have to have somebody standing there to tell them where to do it, so they don't put it in the wrong place.
Pull up the sod and...
Well, that didn't necessarily mean us. That could've been some other contractor doing that, you know?
Well, it says DeSos is...
Somebody has to do it, yeah. It may be easier for us to do it, I don't know, but anyway, it doesn't look like it's probably gonna happen right now. Anyways, that's all I have. Trustee Darke?
Well, I had two items, but we've covered it previously tonight, so I'm all set.
Okay, Trustee Menard?
Uh, just a question for the Super Red. Ryan, when do, when do you expect Hogan to start the, the upgrade in here?
Um, we, we got, you know, it's all under control. IEP kind of purchased order directly to Hogan, and they've received that. Hogan, the contact there said, told me it would take about a week to get the equipment when he orders it, and about two weeks to put it in. Now, I think what he means by two weeks to put it in is not eighty hours of labor, I think it's like, probably a couple days to install it, and then come back every day for, you know, adjust it and, you know, watch it over a couple of weeks before it's fully operational.
So probably at least by the end of November?
Oh, yeah, it, it should start, I'm thinking, maybe at the end of this week, it started, maybe next week?
Yeah, speaking of that project, did you get a chance to ask these folks about their trip charges with this truck?
Yeah, I did. I did, I wasn't happy.
They're charging a hundred and fifty bucks each way just to come here.
To come from Peru.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he said he would look into it and talk, the Seth guy that I talked to that was running this, I said, we weren't happy with that. And he said that he would, he would talk to them about it. I says, you know, that was one thing, when I had a fuel surcharge and all this other stuff, that I said, this is getting pretty, not good to do this, so...
That's all I have for this.
I did mention it to him, though. Okay, Trustee Gadway?
I'd like to request executive session to discuss employment history of a particular employee.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would like to thank Mike Lemieux for all the hard work he has done over the past couple of weeks getting this ice up and ready. It's good.
Yeah, he's been really, he's been staying up nights thinking about this.
Yeah, he said he was...
Hot stress.
Sleepover.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's all come together pretty good.
Yeah, looks nice, yeah.
So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other reports. Uh, let's see. Brian, you have anything tonight? Just wanna announce the, about the, about the...
Cleanup days are born.
Cleanup days?
Yeah, we're picking up brush and leaves this week. About it.
And they've caught up pretty much on all the paving, patching, a little bit more to do, but it's, around the village, it's pretty well caught up. Okay? Code enforcement?
Nothing new to make up, I'll be going back to school and tomorrow through Thursday. So, uh, are we referring to everybody through that, my phone over there, the two-hundred? Because I've got at least four phone calls, and they, but they don't leave me any message, so I really can't call them back. Maybe give them that extension number I have over there. We can do about that, but, but there, the phone rings in there anyways.
Hey, Susan, anything from the library?
Yes. We had our program for the pickup for the Route eleven travel writer and poet, it went very well. Um, Big Bill Adoo won the one hundred dollar Visa gift card for returning her survey, and we're now crunching the data that we got back on the survey. And the library would be happy to house some shuffleboard equipment, but we already keep the pickle, uh, pickleball equipment, a couple sets at the library for people, so we could do that with, uh, shuffleboard also.
I will mention that to Lisa, that I confirmed with the library. Okay, anybody else know? Okay. Uh, open the meeting to the public, anyone from the public? Can you address the board at this time?
Yes, please. Tom Verlani? I wasn't here in your last meeting. I'd like to know if there's any progress on the, um, on the Anchorage. Uh, I believe for a while ago, I brought up some issues on, um, the Anchorage and basically cleaning that up with all the, all the problems that exist there. I also brought up a, a whole bunch of other issues concerning the, uh, the village of the downtown area of Rouse's Point, and is there any plan on cleaning up a lot of these buildings and addressing any of the issues that, um, concerning slum lords and, uh, basically cleaning up this village, the downtown area, so that we can bring in, um, a lot of people into this village?
I've spoken to the sheriff on the Anchorage problem, and they're watching that pretty closely. We've contacted the village attorney to look into legal avenues regarding that same area. He hasn't gotten back with a comprehensive plan yet for that, but it is in his court as we speak.
It, it's also my understanding that there's two Canadians that came to the village, I don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago, and they asked if they could build a house. Their plan is to build a house with that gray building, which is next to the Mosses and across the street from Stewart's. Their answer was, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem, because it's zoned commercial and residential. Um, I guess my, my question to the village would be, would you allow something like that to happen? I mean... Would you allow a house to be built in an area that right now, which should really be commercially zoned?
Well, they talking about building a house, or they're talking about converting that stone building into a residential?
Correct.
I would say that that would be completely on what the, the zoning and planning board said. That wouldn't be a village board matter, because we, the zoning, zoning takes care of that stuff. We don't have oversight in that.
I mean, that is your entryway to Rouse's Point. I mean, that should be a structure, which should be so good-looking, aesthetically pleasing, because it's the entryway to Rouse's Point. If that becomes a home, um, it's pretty much gonna conflict with anything else that could possibly occur in that corner. One is the restaurant that I own, two is Stewart's. Uh, I don't know what eventually the future of the old Windsor is gonna be, but I'm hoping that something will happen with the Windsor, so that we can do something that is aesthetically pleasing to the entranceway of the village. Uh, that old... Uh, that old stone building is actually, um, you know, pretty much a historical building
It's very historic.
That should be an entranceway to the village.
Well, do you think, I, you know, I'm just speaking hypothetically, because nobody's spoken to me about this, first I'm hearing of it right now as we spot it. Would it be better to have a resident in that building, heating it and lighting it and maintaining it and keeping a roof on it, as opposed to having it basically a vacant building for the last forty years?
Well...
Which, which is more beneficial?
Well, it's more beneficial if somebody buying it and them selling it, and basically changing your laws, so that that needs to become a commercial property, so that, uh, it could be developed into a completely commercial zone, uh, which that corner should be. That's my answer to it. It's, it's not whether or not it should be empty or not, that should never, that, that should never have been allowed to occur. The sale of a commercial property to someone that has no intention of developing it.
Well, for one thing, there's no parking there whatsoever. None whatsoever. I mean, where could you, where could you put, like, if you put a restaurant there, where, where could you put the parking?
I'm not saying put a restaurant there, you can easily have a, that could easily be turned into a building, which is, uh, something which is the entranceway to Ross's Point. It doesn't necessarily have to be a structure which would house a lot of cars for, but, to make it residential is certainly contrary to what that whole corner should be. That entire, that entire area should be commercial.
If somebody, if somebody bought it and they wanted to change it to residential, I mean, you know, you, you can't stop them.
Well, you can to change laws.
Didn't you turn a residential house into a commercial?
You, you can't, you can, you can change that entire area to commercial.
But didn't you do exactly the same thing? You've turned a residential property into a commercial property? So what is the difference? I'd rather see somebody living in a house there that's gonna keep it up.
Well, you probably have a better chance of developing it and having money spent if it's commercial than if it's residential.
Not if you don't have enough land.
You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be something which, you know, you could, you could get, you can get parking some other, some other area.
Where? Where are you gonna park? You gonna park at Stewart's and walk across the road?
Well, I'm just saying, that whole area...
With, uh, the Saxony area, Windsor's been converted to apartments. That's an apartment building. I don't know how far they've come along with it, put eyes on the planning board.
Saxony is now an apartment building.
Yeah. But, what was it, five years ago?
It's a commercial building.
I think so. They came to us, and he, he needed a waiver on the parking spaces, because he sold his parking lot in the back to, to Bennett's, but... And then the top came off, and I got off the planning board on that time, but I believe that was converted into, there's, there's residents in there now, I think.
I believe so.
He's still doing it, and he still hasn't cleaned up the stuff he said he was going to, but
But...
That's an apartment building.
The answer is all, sorry, I have to tell you, the answer is always, "But." I mean, it's, it's a war zone, it's an actual, it's a train wreck. That whole corner is an absolute train wreck. I'm coming to you for help, I'm not coming to you to... I, I, I'm coming to you for help to clean up this village. I'm coming to you as an owner of a restaurant, I'm coming to you as, as a village, as, as a, uh, a property owner, I'm coming to you as a resident of this village to basically ask you to clean up this entire village, so that people will wanna come here and walk around and shop around. That's why I'm coming to you. And I'm gonna keep on doing this until I see some kind of progress. I really, really, really have a love for this village, and when I walk downtown, I just wanna cry. It's a train wreck. You've got, you've got Armin's, there's nothing that has been done there. You've got the anchorage, there's nothing that has been done there. You've got the old times.
Excuse me.
There's nothing that has been done with the old times.
Excuse me, Armin's, Mr. Turner owns that, and he's done apartments up in the upstairs so far.
Well, there's nothing that I see, Benny, that is commercially being done below. There's nothing that I see, there's a yellow building across the street from Lakeside Coffee. There's nothing being done there. And it's almost like laws don't exist here, and people do whatever they want with their buildings. That's unheard of in the rest of parts of the United States and anywhere else. It's, it...
Well, you send citations to guys and stuff like that?
I would send citations, Benny, to everybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we send them and stuff like that, but they still don't do nothing.
Get another lawyer. Get someone with a, a little bit of hood spot, get someone different. Get someone from White Plains, New York, get someone from Albany. Don't use locals that, that, that are really, have no interest. I mean, you have laws that...
We can talk about this all night long.
And what are you, what are you gonna do, Mr. Brolin?
You sure as hell, you sure as hell...
What are you gonna do when you send these people who don't, you're gonna, what are you gonna do? Take their property away from them? Because they don't have the money to pay for the citations or pay for the lawyers?
Well, then maybe they should sell the property. I mean, I don't know what to tell you, they need to clean up their properties, they really do. You know, this is the year two thousand and nineteen, all you're doing is you're coming to me and saying, "What are we gonna do?" Why don't you put an economic plan into place? Why don't you track it by your key, key performance indexes to economically improve this area, rather than you come and tell me, "What are we gonna do?" I'm telling you, you should do something. You're sitting there.
You're right, man.
You're sitting right there. Why the hell don't you do something? Because I've spent a million dollars, if not more, on my building and my restaurant to economically improve this area. And you're sitting there and telling me what to do? What are we gonna do? You're the one that, you're the one that's sitting there. Why don't you tell me what you're gonna do?
I think we're done speaking with you. If you're gonna scream at us?
Well, you're, the answers that you're giving me are absolutely ridiculous.
You don't think we've tried these things before, Tom?
Absolutely ridiculous. All you could do is stand there and laugh at me, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I am, because you're being ridiculous.
Wow, you know what?
You're being ridiculous.
No, I'm not being ridiculous, trust me, I'm not being ridiculous. I'm far from being ridiculous.
Okay.
Far from being ridiculous.
I think what you need to do is you need to get a group together. We did this about fifteen years ago. We did downtown revitalization project. We did the whole downtown over again. We painted all the buildings. We did as much as we could with the laws that were allowed to pass, with the property that's privately owned. They changed a bunch of things around, like you couldn't have, um, residential on the first floor of commercial buildings downtown, like, they'll make apartments on the first floor, because they wanted stores on the first floor. The problem is, those buildings are vacant, because there's no business for them. They had businesses in them, the businesses went out of business. There, there was a, there was a, a bar, and there was a, there was a restaurant with a bar, there was a pizza place. Twenty years ago, all those buildings were full. Now, we've gone through a major economic turnaround in this village, losing our major employer in accounting.
I understand that.
And we're on the, we're focusing on rejuvenating and getting that back. When that comes back, people will buy those buildings if they can do a viable economic plan and make money off them. But if they can't make money off them, they're not gonna invest anything in them.
When there's economic development in this area, the village needs to be careful, because the first people that will come in here are speculators, the Rick Sluskas, that will buy all the buildings around here, and then wait, and just wait for the buildings to have an increase in value. That's what he did the first time around.
I get that all the time, because what happens is they come up for taxes. And then people from Montreal buy these places, and they don't do anything with them, and eventually there's a fire and it burns half of it down, like in Champlain and Moors, and then there's, they don't have the money to tear the rest of the building down, they just abandon it. And that happens all over the North Country.
Like I said, I, it's, it's, uh, you know, commercial real estate needs to be developed. There's, you should be working with real estate agents, because the only interest real estate agents have is in selling the buildings. They don't care who buys them.
Right.
The village needs to get involved with the real estate agents and say, "Hey, by the way, this is a commercial property. The sale of this property requires the development of this property, and you have a certain amount of time to develop it."
I, I suggested...
And that's the only way.
I suggested to you, the proper avenue probably for, if you wanna get results, is contact the Chamber of Commerce. They should form a Chamber of Commerce in Ross's Point, they had one before, but it failed due to lack of interest. But you could still go to the county Chamber of Commerce and see what they wanna do, because that's beyond the realm of what a village board is supposed to be doing. We're welcoming these kind of things, we're encouraging them, but we're not instigating them ourselves.
I, I'm not done. I'm, you know, I, um, I'm gonna fight tooth and nail, I am just not done. Including a hotel in this area, uh, and, you know, uh, I'm just telling you right now, if this is the reaction that I get, because I'm loud, I think, I think you need to leave the board. I don't think you should be even on this board.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just telling you that.
Okay, we'll leave it to the public.
You don't belong here.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Ron Block, uh, here from regional news. I know the downtown is, doesn't look the best, and I don't think I'll ever come back. I think you could get that whole downtown looking a lot better, changing one law and allowing complete conversion to residential all throughout downtown area. It's never gonna come back as a downtown. I talked to Mr. Steve Peters about that, he agrees.
My view is it's kind of migrating out to Route eleven. You know, what we're...
I'm just saying...
O'Reilly and the drugstore and the restaurants.
If those owners could get more revenue, they would fix up the fronts of those buildings, all of them. That's, that would, that would solve one problem. Not, not everybody's problem, different issue. But that's one issue.
I, I don't disagree with that one more than other, I mean, that's something that the village has to decide which way they wanna go. It'd be nice if we had a whole bunch of little stores like the Champlain Coffee Place, that's the, you know, the pride of the downtown. But you start getting Section Eight housing in there, and the whole place goes down, real fast. I mean, just look at downtown Champlain. You know, fifty years ago, that was beautiful down there, and now look at it, you know? Anyway. All right. Anyone else? Okay, um...
Make a motion, we go into recess?
Okay, a motion to recess?
Second.
All in favor?